Good morning, Frederick County. This is Dana and Charlie from the 3%, the Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries Podcast. And as you all know, Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries has seven different ministries, and we're looking for people all the time that want to help us out. And one of our ministries is to make sure that we get as much information out there to people so that they can make legitimate, logical decisions and critical thinkers can make logical decisions on how we actually run our Frederick County. It's very important to us. As you all know, our main focus of Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries is the children. Okay, it's all about the kids. So we're going to go through some stuff today. We're going to have some fun with our guest, Patrick. And I'm going to turn it over to my friend Charlie, who's going to take it from here. All yours, Charlie.
Thank you, Dana. And thank you, Patrick, for sharing your time and thoughts with us. It's always difficult for someone to step into the arena, to throw their hat in the ring, to step forward and do something while the rest of us just talk about it. I appreciate your getting involved in this. But as we start talking about some of the specific things about the school board position you're running for and the school board in general, first, we'd like to know a little bit about your background, where you came from, how did you get to where you are? Kind of before your political efforts here.
The human side.
Who is Patrick North?
Yeah, human side, much easier to talk about than everything in the campaign itself. But thanks for having me. Appreciate it. So Patrick North, man. So first of all, you know, I'm married seven, eight years with a beautiful wife. We have two boys. So a lot about me is my family, my friends, my faith. So those are all my priorities. But I think, you know, it's just about enjoying life as much as possible and having purpose to life. So the boys keep me pretty busy. My oldest is five. My youngest will be three soon. This past spring, I got to coach T-ball as my oldest ventured off into that.
That's a blast, man. Enjoy it now.
Yeah, yeah, it was. I really enjoyed it a ton. I'm a big baseball guy, so it was cool to share that with him. He's doing soccer this fall, so it's even even more fun to kind of watch him sidelines his dad and not coach. So that's been enjoyable, but just being really engaged with my boys, getting them involved in our church more, in the community more. So those are some of my priorities with my family. Who am I as a person? I love sports. I was a college athlete. I played basketball in college for a little bit years and years ago, over 20 years ago, which is crazy. You know, I try to be active in the Parks and Rec leagues here around the county. So not uncommon to see me on the softball diamond or on the basketball court or searching for my golf ball out in the woods on some golf course somewhere. I'm the fun guy of a foursome at a tournament. I'm not sure I'm not your ace, but I'll be the guy that keeps it light. But yeah, I love music. I'm a big music nut, you know, really. But you know, I work a lot. I work hard. So I work at Valley Health. I work in business operations. So I oversee some clinics here in the Shenandoah Valley. And so manage people, trying to make sure we're accessible for quality healthcare. Try to help people navigate the healthcare system, which can be, which can feel very large, very large at times. Yeah, so that's a little bit about me. I'm, you know, try to stay busy, try to be active.
Right. So what motivated you to get into the race for the school board?
Service. My family has modeled that for me and my sister about the significance about being a servant to others. My, I'm fortunate to have six grandparents growing up that all got along and was very involved in our family. So, you know, two of them served, one in the Korean War and one in Vietnam. My one grandfather actually fudged his paperwork so he could enlist sooner before the age of eighteen to serve in Vietnam. So stand-up guy. My grandfather very involved in Isaac Walton. So he's an environmentalist. My grandmother's involved in our churches growing up. My father was an educator for 32 years. He taught history and government in Warren County Schools in Front Royal where I'm from. He oversaw Booster Club for, you know, athletic department and my mom very involved in the church. So it's very ingrained in me. And now as a father of two young boys and entrenched in my community, I'm looking for a way to serve. And public education is very, very much at the root of my upbringing, my core. So I definitely think I can make a difference. I think I can help. I think my, my approach to problem solving and collaboration and leading people could be something that's different as well. So I'm just trying to look for the opportunity to highlight those skills.
Excellent. So you came up in an educational background too. You said your dad was a teacher with 32 years. You said history and economics, huh?
History and government.
History and government. Wow. That's pretty cool. My mother was a master's in education as well and was a nurse. So we kind of have a little bit of the, you know, some similarities here. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Very, very common to have, yeah, very common to have a football game on and then right after we're on the History Channel for a little bit, waiting for the next game a couple of ones. So a lot of integration growing up.
With all of that in mind, do you have any particular issues you want to step in and champion?
Oh, man. Yes. You know, I think I've been trying to remind myself through this entire campaign that I'm one person. I could be a vocal, persistent one person when I'm feeling called and very passionate about the subject at hand. But, you know, I think culture is a big one right now. I've been super successful with building teams that work well together, that have a healthy workplace culture and environment on a smaller scale in comparison to the school division. I think just bringing some of those qualities and the skills to the board. I do think there is a culture issue with living in the community. I'm very much involved and integrated with family members or friends that work in the schools. I've attended meetings. I've, I've heard firsthand that there are some, some challenges that are things that we can't control, but then there are things that we can control. And we should never have staff that feel like they can't speak out without some type of retribution retaliation from whomever. Because I've kind of heard it from a couple of different areas. But just looking at how we can come together more, be less divisive.
On the school board, you mean?
Well, I think on the school board and just in the schools in general and in our community. I think we're, you know, we've been living it, especially a lot in the past couple of weeks. We're, we're kind of having some, some very energetic and compassionate conversations about our differences. But I think at like a, not on a smaller scale in the schools, it's just about teamwork and it's about collaboration.
I was impressed that you mentioned problem solving. In my world, I've realized that most problems come from solutions. So somebody has a quick solution that causes other problems. So the source of problems are solutions. And, and that's because people have one step. They see the problem. They have a solution. They don't go in and say, well, what caused it? What are the alternatives? How good are the alternatives? Which is the best alternative? And how do we make that happen? They don't go through those things. And if everybody did, things would come out a lot more logical.
Well, it's the why. It's why did this happen? How do we, how did we get here and how do we fix it? And for a sales term, you would call it the return on investment. If we fix this, what's the return on investment for the parents, for the students, for the school? How do we collaborate that and put that together so that we can all work together? Let me ask you this. What are your thoughts on, because we've asked everybody this question, opting in and opting out with the books and so forth and what the parents' views are? Because during COVID, Patrick, we all, a lot of the parents, as you already know, went through a lot of stuff. Okay, from masking up to, to you've got to get the jab to you, got to sit behind your computer. How would you see, how would you problem solve something like that if that were to come again? Because the reason I ask that is because it's starting to rear its head again, you know, in some, in some situations that we're seeing. So how do the parents fit into this as far as their say is concerned when it comes to the policies of school?
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I think I had an idea of a lot of things coming in. Yeah, I mean, you start to engage. If you're doing it right, you're having conversations with all peoples, right? So, you know, you're, you're, you're taking the time and making the effort to hear everyone out and understand them, right? Not to have some type of, like, I need to label them a particular way so I know how to communicate with them or support them or work through the situation. 14,000 kids, over 14,000 kids in the school system. So there's going to be a lot of like voices and there's going to be a lot of priorities that are going to conflict from family to family. I think it's just hearing people out. I think it's getting their, their point of view, their experience. And I understand that we could have so many folks that have a great experience at the schools, but it doesn't mean that's everyone else's. But it's about hearing about that as well. I think on these larger scale challenges, there is a lot of, a lot of things contributing to the solution that, you know, the solution perspective Charlie was just sharing, and it's trying to be, trying to remind myself as an elected official, should I win? I'm not representing Patrick and I'm not representing how I operate my household. It's about who the voters are in my, in my district, whether they voted for me or not. But the people in my district and what they want to see from the schools. So there's going to be polarizing issues that come up that people are going to have conflict about. I think for me, it's about finding out what it is that the people that I live with and live around want to see from our schools and then trying to get to that outcome. I've been asked this question before, Dana. I think you were at the FCR seat where this question came up. And I'm just being honest, there's a lot of things in the future that it's going to be hard for me to answer now until I'm in those situations. So I think what's important for voters to hear is that I'm going to be informative. I'm going to ask questions. I'm going to do my research. I'm going to, I'm going to put the effort forward before just making a decision. And I'm not going to just make a decision for all these families that maybe how I would operate my household. I think that's, that's the part of like keeping these elections nonpartisan at the school level. It's because all families have to feel like these elected officials are going to take the things that they care about and what matters the most to them into consideration, not do. That's going to be part of that, that equation for the solution. For the books specifically, since you, since you highlighted the books to begin your question, I do feel like we had a policy in place that was being used by a small fraction of parents. So I do think, you know, drawing a process out for 16 months, I think was the start to finish. That takes a lot of attention away from other parts of the school operation that we could be focused on as well.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, I mean, there's not going to be, there's not going to be an easy solution to buy four years hopefully on the board. But I think it's just putting the legwork in and speaking for.
As Dana mentioned, they opt in and opt out. Where does that issue stand from what you understand? I know you're not on the board right now, right? So from your observing the board, where do we stand with the ability for a parent to have the authority to opt in instead of automatically their kid being opted in?
Yeah. So I think the way that it stands now is that whenever there's a book that's marked as sensitive, as sensitive material in it, before the child can come home with it, the parents have to give the permission for the child to do so.
Yeah. So you agree with that too? Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I think for me, I actually agreed with the prior policy of the opt, you know, the opt out. But I think it's, you know, like I said, it was 16 months worth of work that went into it. So I don't want to minimize the efforts because it does seem like there was a lot of thought that went into it. I just, from my understanding, what's been shared with me, as just a normal constituent, not as a candidate, that's what I am right now. As a dad, right? As I was following, you know, it's, I'm going to know what my son comes home with, both of them, every day from school. I'm going to be in their backpack like my parents were in my backpack. I'm going to ask questions. I'm going to know what's going on with them first through them. But as far as, you know, when I circle back to again, the original question, I think there was a policy that was working that was in place that was still having the outcomes that we wanted. I think there, instead of just agreeing with all three steps, there probably could have been some, from this constituent at least, maybe some different outcomes where it didn't have to be a blanket to all three. And stick to the policy that was in place until proven otherwise.
That was a six, seven, eight year thing. I will say this, and this is just from learning it because like you, we're learning it too. Okay. Which is why we started doing podcasts and why we started getting involved with Mountain Patriots. We started this 40 months ago, trying to find out exactly where people stood. And just watching everything from the Board of Supervisors to the school board. A lot of policies were put in years ago, okay? And you guys, and I'm just going to warn you like I do everybody else, there's policies that were put in so long ago where no, and this is just my feeling, that weren't really thought through. So you kind of get stuck with 10, 12, 14, 16 months worth of trying to undo that knot in the shoestring to try to unravel it, to try to make people as happy as possible. I just remember growing up, we used to go to this, my wife is a bookworm. She's a genius. Okay? That's why I married her, because I don't have to think as much. But we had this place called Greetings and Readings, and it was a gigantic bookstore. Okay? But there was always, we called it the dirty old man section, you know? And here you are as a 12-year-old leaning around the corner, trying to see the pictures of what's going on. And they, and they opted us out. We didn't have a choice. And when you were talking a few minutes ago about the culture of the school, I, one of the big concerns that we had is kids actually knowing too much at a young age where they shouldn't. They shouldn't be knowing politics. And when I was a kid, when I was a kid and I was in probably first grade, I knew that the president of the United States was Lyndon Baines Johnson. Okay? We knew who the president was. But we didn't get into political talk. We didn't get into sex talk. We didn't have tattoos and piercings and different hair and, and we all wore uniforms so that we all fit in. You know, that, but that's back in the day. So I think the culture has, this is just for me. I think the culture is gone a little bit awry. And I think what a lot of the people that I'm hearing here in Frederick County is they're looking for somebody that's going to stand up and step in and go, you know what? We're the adults in the room. Okay? And I like what you also said about the fact that you check out your kid's backpack. I did the same thing. I knew what my son was doing. I coached, you said baseball, T-ball, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, football. Well, we didn't do football. We did baseball, lacrosse, baseball, lacrosse, soccer. But we did all kinds of different things, but we were involved in it. And a lot of the parents think that they can drop their kid off and you all are going to handle it. All right. But now you've got parents now that are more engaged going, wait a second, I'm not happy with the way things are going. So that's why I ask the questions about the parents and what the parents' thoughts were in this, because I know there was a big fight over the books. And I feel bad for the school. I partially feel bad for the guys in the school board because they took the brunt of it. Just be ready for the brunt. Be ready for the brunt.
Yeah. You know, and I will say like, you know, I've, I haven't been like super critical. I've been outspoken again as a constituent. You know, I think since running, like I've seen the grind and I can see how, like you mentioned earlier, what it takes to throw yourself in the arena. I think Charlie mentioned that. Like, I can appreciate that more September than I, than I did in May. Yeah, I'll eat crow there. That's no problem. But I think, you know, it's, I think it's in the sake of transparency to some of what you were just highlighting and maybe it's oversharing to be sensitive to that. I think, you know, I'm, again, I'm, I'm dad. I don't need other people to tell me how to be dad. I want to be dad. But I also know there's other situations for other families that makes it maybe a little bit harder to kind of be in the know as well of what's going on with their child or children. I've been very impressed with the amount of communication that I've been getting from the schools as a new parent.
And I know some of it's new. Pretty cool. I'm going to tell you that now.
I know some of it's new. Yeah, I know some of it's new and I, and I appreciate that. I'm glad that that's the case. I mean, I'm getting notifications probably daily, one way or the other, whether it's bus drop off or schoolwork and what he's doing in class and so forth. So I can appreciate that as well. But I do, you mentioned, I want to circle back to it, Dan, too. Like I do think there's like an age appropriateness for sure in books, just like there are on television shows and movies that we expose our kids to. But the hard part, I think, from like societal is cell phones. It's like cell phones are where kids are really. Yeah, for sure. So I think it's, I think some of it could be potentially in pockets in our division at times where there's maybe some overexposure at a particular age or depending on what the, whatever it is, whether it's through the teacher or whether it's through the peers in the classroom, which I feel like when I got exposed to things for the first time, it didn't come from my teachers. It came from the peers in my class I was sitting next to or, or, you know, eating lunch with. So it's hard because it's, it's just a melting pot of people all coming together and we're trying to figure out how to have quality education and experiences out of it.
And it's a lot different than it was when we went to school. You know, we were watching something, I'm just going to throw this in there because I know people think about it too. You know, some of these young kids, especially with the devices that they use, our government tracking device. Okay, you've got kids and you've got the bullying and so forth. And a kid will take a pic, somebody will say, show me this. And the next thing you know, it's all over the school and this is what's going on. So there's, there's, there's certain protocols that I think that I get, I get Charlie, it could be called values that are, that are taught in schools, you know, nowadays where, you know, hey, DEI, this is the curriculum. We're sticking with the curriculum. You're going to learn how this goes, this goes, this goes, this goes. So that you are a critical thinker and you can go here, not what I thought you should know about what was going on. See, we were taught to be critical thinkers, you know, which is a little different than it is today. I mean, I have a lot of kids that'll, that'll say stuff. I'm like, where did you get that from? Well, I heard it from, and I'm like, well, that's not right. I mean, I don't know where you got that from. All my friends know it, you know? So you start to think about, you know, how, we're dropping our kids off for what, 10 hours a day? They, we, the schools have our kids longer than we do, you know? What's actually happening there? And what is, what are the value system that we need to get back to? Which is what we're looking for in the school board as well. Charlie, you got anything to tag on to that? I just saw a bird hit my window. Sorry, guys. That was really weird.
I do. The cell phones, I think, are a critical problem. But I remember when I was in college, they invented calculators.
I was thinking that.
And they said, oh, the calculators are going to ruin us. We're not going to know how to do math. Well, that's not really true. But the cellphone, AI, as I understand it, has been measured to make our students dumber because of the way they're able to do, get stuff from AI and not have to think, just cut and paste. You know, it's, there, there's a big issue there with AI is bearing down on us. What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't know how much AI is integrated into the, into the classrooms right now.
If they have a cellphone, they have AI.
Oh, yeah, on their cellphone. But if they're following the policies that are in place now, they're not on their cell phones, at least during school hours. Now, when they're at home doing homework assignments, you know, it's another thing. I think that AI is really impactful for businesses to get data and information a little bit faster.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think there's part of like, society. Yeah, I think society needs to embrace it to an extent. But when it comes to overlap with education, that's, I know that's something that a lot of schools are currently looking into, looking into, especially at like the collegiate level as well. So again, I don't, I don't fully know, you know, how much of that's being used in the schools. But should I be elected? I mean, that would, that's one of the things that I would like to learn more about.
We're, we're all going to learn. That's why we're asking you because you can come back to us and say, hey, guys, I'm going to pop into a Mountain Patriots meeting and this is what's happening. Because we have, most of the folks in the school board come to our, pop into a Mountain Patriots meeting. The Board of Supervisors comes in, the sixth district chair comes in. So we get reports pretty much from everybody that's, that's out there on all sides. So we have a pretty good idea of how we can kind of steer, you know, not tell people what to do, but kind of see what's going on and steer people in the right direction so that we can bring the community together and we're all kind of on the same page. Charlie, collaboration, exactly. That's what Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries is about. Collaboration.
We need, we need to stop for a commercial here in a moment. But collaboration is something that is truly important on many levels. And you mentioned culture. That, that's a, a big deal. And I've seen some collaboration going on in classrooms that, that I think is extremely valuable. And when you get out of school, finally, high school or college, you, you know where you can find things in books, but you got to find things in people to help make things happen.
Yep. Are you ready, Charlie?
Go for it.
Okay. And Patrick, I'm glad you're here because you're part of the school board. One of the things that Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries felt was lacking is the fact that, and this is part of the reason that Mr. Sturtevant is, is on the school board, because he is, his granddaughter thought that, she didn't know what the Gettysburg Address is. And he was like, what? You know, a lot of people think it's an address. Okay? So what we decided to do is put together a historical podcast. Here's the chance for people to be a part of history in our 250th anniversary. And what we're looking for is moms, dads, kids, teachers, business owners, history buffs, to bring historical figures to life, bring them into the time machine. We want to talk to Thomas Paine. We want to talk to Paul Revere. We want to talk to Thomas Jefferson. We want to talk to JFK and Teddy Roosevelt as themselves and let them know, have them let us know what it was like back in their time and what history that they can teach us. I think it's probably one of the most important things, one of the most important projects that we'll see in the next year with the 250th anniversary. So we know that everything started in the Shenandoah Valley. Virginia was huge during the Revolutionary War. So we work with all kinds of people across the United States. We work with Port Henry, First Landing, 1607 project. We're working with a lot of different people to try to get that history back into the classroom so people understand the heritage and how great it is to be part of the greatest country that ever was, has ever been in existence. We have the greatest country in the world. We have freedom and we want people to understand where that freedom came from. So I will, and I'll end with this. Website is being worked on right now because it's got a lot of upgrades to do this. If somebody is interested, and we want everybody to be interested, hit me up at mtpatriots@proton.me. It will be in the description box. That's mtpatriots@proton.me. And we'd love to talk to you about it. And we'd like to get the parents and the folks and the teachers and everybody involved. So that's my little commercial. And soon you'll be able to go to Wake Up Winchester. Yes, Charlie?
And the way we want people to be involved is if you're a history buff for, about Patrick Henry or Benjamin Franklin or name anybody, anybody in those 250 years, even the Civil War, World War II, whatever, and you're a history buff and you would be willing to go into that period, come on our podcast and be interviewed by us. Come on our podcast and be interviewed by us. Uh, as if we've, we have a time machine that allows us to communicate, uh, to learn more about the The person. So it's not just a date in history and a place in history.
Who you are.
And an event, um, but we want you to Um, for example, uh, I'm George Washington. And I've learned many things about George and how he grew up and where he grew up and what he did. All before he got involved in the military and politics, um, which I'm gonna sprinkle in Along with some of the key facts so that we can make History interesting, alive beyond uh, what's uh, simply on the timeline. Um, so if you're willing to to be a person Uh, to be interviewed by us on on this podcast, please let us know.
Yeah, let us. Well, we're gonna have fun with it. Okay, we're gonna have a lot of fun with it. And one of the other candidates saw this and he said, man, I've got a daughter who's into acting and theater and stuff like that. Do you have room for that? I said, well, if she'd like to be like a young Amelia Earhart or a young Eleanor Roosevelt that told us how she got to that. What she learned to get there, we want to know all about it. And the idea also, Patrick, is to be able to take this into the school. So that the kids in third, fourth, fifth grade can learn that history in twenty minutes. You know, and it's shareable. So we don't just want it here. We want it to go across the United States. So that's our little commercial. Charlie, back to your next question.
Okay, um, uh, you mentioned um civics and we just mentioned civics essentially. Uh, your father, I believe you said, taught civics. How can we do, how can the schools do a better job than they are now in teaching civics? And in incorporating patriotism into our school, um, into the minds of our children. And you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I I think it's a uh, It's an opportunity probably anywhere uh nowadays. I think the important part, um, you know, is that we're, you know, The hard part is our state is so driven by the SOLs, right? So a lot of the times.
Gonna go there, yep.
A lot of the times the teachers are trying to teach to the test, and I know you guys have talked about.
They teach to the test, the SOLs.
Pretty often, you know, in these in these conversations, but I think they're they're just looking for opportunities to have fun while teaching to the test and being Creative and and integrated. So I think, you know, whether it's civics or any other content area, I think that's probably the name of the game right now. You know, I would love, I would love for uh, times to kind of go back pre SOL. Uh, that's not my, you know, my say.
A lot of people think that.
Yeah, yeah. And um, because I, the SOLs came into play while I was actually in school. So I saw kind of firsthand what it was like beforehand and then, you know, one of the SOLs uh, were 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 put in place. So Um, I think that's the that's the part. I think it's looking for ways to engage our community through the classroom as well and vice versa, the community coming into the classroom. Um, you know, I think a lot from the small business Freedom Alliance meeting that I went to, it was a candid forum, but just. Yeah, and the conversations I had with them was pretty, pretty great. They were all willing to partner with the schools one way or the other. So
Good folks.
Here's some opportunity, Charlie, for the kids to get out, get out of classrooms and into the community a little bit more. Um, and then people from the community coming into the classrooms and kind of talking about that civic duty um, as well.
Yeah, it seems, it it seems to me that there's an opportunity uh, for the community. Uh, those of us with gray hair or no hair, uh, to come in and share what we know With uh, with students in a more robust way than we are now and that and share the wisdom. Um, if if you had a a way to reach out and And take advantage of the willingness of of us older folks to share wisdom. And even if it's nothing more than saying.
I thought it was tenured.
How I decided. Pardon?
You're you're a tenured folk, Charlie. You're not an older guy. You're tenured.
Thanks.
Knowledgeful.
I'm I'm not, I'm not fossilized yet. But if there was a, if there was a framework of way we could volunteer to maybe come and Um, pick and choose from a a list of topics, a list of subjects, uh, come in and and share those things. I mean, what I was saying was, one of the things that I enjoy sharing is how I decided To get into what career I did.
Right.
And I decided that
Career Day.
In eighth grade. I mean, and so it's it it's at that time of their lives where They need to start thinking about where they're going and learn. Uh, for example, um, this isn't true anymore, I don't think, but I wanted to be a pilot. And I, but I found I had lots of cavities and they were all amalgams. Um, and I found out in my reading, this is in eighth grade, that in order to be a pilot, Um, you had to go through the military, uh, and you had to have all your metal fillings removed And replaced with permanent fillings. So and I, right there, I said, no, not gonna be a pilot. So I became an engineer instead. So, but it's thinking, it's sharing Uh, some of what went on in our lives to get us to where we are, that I think would be helpful for kids.
Yeah, and you know, one thing, it's kind of like my little campaign tagline, you know, strong community, stronger schools. Right? So very much looking for any opportunity to integrate the community and and the folks at it with the schools as much as we can.
Excellent. What other, what other topics uh, would you like people to know about how you think About things in the school system, uh, in the school board, uh, so that we can better know whether to vote for you or not?
Sure. Um, you know, I Uh, from day one, I've said that like politics has kind of made things a challenge within the schools.
Mm hmm.
Um, all sides. That's not.
I'm gonna agree with you.
Um, so I've tried to make sure through this entire campaign as as a true independent, As all the candidates for school board are intended and designed to operate as through their campaign. Um, I've made my, I've maintained my independence. I think it's important that all all people understand that they have a voice that I want to hear. Um, I have an old school kitchen table approach to people. Um, I I do that in my household with my kids and my wife every night at dinner. Um, I'm like that as a leader with my personnel. I want to hear what you have to say and Um, there's value in what you have to say.
Yeah.
But the minute, the minute you put an R or a D next to your name, it kind of makes that a little bit harder uh, these days.
First with your egg.
Yeah, so um, just trying to maintain that approach, Charlie, and um, I've I've taken any opportunity I can to speak anywhere. I've chatted with Democrats, I've tried Republicans, I've been at the Small Business Alliance, the Winchester Worth Fighting For, I'm with you guys today. Um, and it's just to show like I, I like to talk about the schools and the state of the schools and I want to hear from All community members. Everyone's voice matters. Um, I do think You know, I I think there's a, there's definitely some workaround culture like I mentioned earlier. But one, one topic that might be unpopular is is the idea of indoctrination like as a blanket In the schools, like the schools itself are indoctrinating. I don't believe that. I believe that there may be performance issues Um, with a personnel member or whatnot. I don't know that it's Dr. Hummer and his team that are sitting down, you know, trying to Indoctrinate our children. Um, so I I do want to call that separation out a little bit. And again, I've supervised people for eleven years now. So like People are going to people and I know that. Um, and there's a place for that accountability and follow up. Um, like any other organization would and any leaders in those organizations. But, you know, I think outside of that, I really just want to get back to Quality outcomes and this with with our education. I want the the integration of the community. Um, I want people to 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 turn down the temperature a little bit, um, and work together more.
We could all use a temperature change.
Yeah, like, you know, but I I think it's the, you know, listen to people to understand, not to reply, right? Or to have something to come back with. And um, I'm a genuine guy. You get what you see. I haven't changed for anybody that's been in front of me. Dana, this is the third time I think you've heard me speak and I'm
Yep.
Hopefully, I'm just as genuine today as the other two times. Um, But there's a lot of work that we have to get done. There's a lot of preparing for the growth of our community that's It's already here and there's more coming. Um, I grew up in Front Royal, which is a smaller, a smaller area, of course, in comparison to Frederick County. I'm a small town guy. Lived in the valley my entire life. The valley is beautiful. And I've traveled the country and there's no one, there's nothing more beautiful than the valley. Um, but the growth is coming. And, you know, we gotta figure out how these schools can be safe and cramming Too many kids in a classroom is is not safe for the children. It's not safe for the teacher. And there's just no way that we can meet these quality standards with with so many kids in a classroom and how overstimulating that can be. Um, so, you know, looking at how we can work with the supervisors to plan ahead.
Mm hmm.
And um, you know, I as a taxpayer, I'm I'm a little myth that we're gonna be paying threefold On a school that we could have paid for ten, twelve years ago for cheaper, you know, and it's trying not to repeat That history as well as we move forward. Um, I think the thing that I've appreciated Through watching and learning with this fourth high school is how much the community is being brought into the conversation. Um, which I appreciate.
Mm hmm.
Hundred percent. Um, so keeping that same type of spirit. Uh, I think Dr. Hummer and his team, there's there's definitely clear intent and there's Clear intent, I think, here more so recently at the at the board level, or they want to engage and hear from people. And so it's trying to carry that baton, Charlie, um, and keep that same energy and that same focus forward.
So trying to keep the main thing, the main thing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was, that's exactly what I was thinking. Keeping the main thing, the main thing.
Yep.
Cool.
Charlie, you gotta stop thinking like we do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So is there anything else that you want to leave with us and our audience? Um, uh, before we close out this morning?
Just, I appreciate the opportunity that you guys presented me today.
Thanks for coming on. Seriously, thank you.
Yeah, I will, if elected, continue uh, this approach um, to being Present and being seen, being accessible uh, to my constituents and my my neighbors. Um, you know, early voting has started. I think this is day three of early voting. So whether you vote for me or not, you need to get out and vote. You know, that is a right that not everyone on this world has. Um,
Use it.
Use it.
Use it.
Use it or lose it.
Yep.
I I prefer you use it for me though, if you're in the Shawnee District, obviously. Um, you know, I think, yeah, vote North, right? Um, Yeah, I I don't, I don't think so. I think, you know, my campaign's been pretty trans, um, pretty transparent since day one.
Consistent. I've I've heard you quite a few times. You're very consistent, Patrick.
I appreciate that. It's accessible to anyone. Uh, I have a website, uh, which is W W W North Or F C P S dot com. Um, I have my social media platform.
Because we're, do that again, because we want to make sure that because Barbara's gonna put all of this in the description, folks. So There's gonna be links and everything else for you to be able to follow up with this. So give us your website again, so people can have it.
W W W.
W W W.
Dot North.
Dot North.
Or the number and then F C P S dot com.
Perfect.
That's simple.
Yep, I have uh, Instagram, I have Facebook, I have email, um, You know, I really want people to to engage me and and I think the one thing I want everyone to know is like, I want you to hold me accountable, you know, to if elected and Um, I won't always have all the right answers. I may not always vote the way that people may want me to vote in that particular moment. Um, I do want to be held accountable in any line of work that I do. Um, but I I think the thing I I respect the most about you guys Listening to all your podcasts through the year is like the kindness piece, I think is is important that.
Be nice.
Yeah, be nice, right? Be kind. And yeah, like, you know, I I'll have conversations with people Um, when it's respectful and it's productive and it's and it's kind. Um, You can be passionate with me, that's fine too, but you know, the disrespect, I, yeah, I would love to see the amount of disrespect and hatred kind of like minimize a little bit.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
How can we help you?
Well, I think this is a great opportunity. Yeah, I, like I said, this was helpful uh, uh, to to speak with you guys and the folks that follow you. Um, you know, like I said, I have my pages, so there's obviously areas for people to donate. Uh, it's a three person race. And you, I'm the third one of the three uh, to meet with you guys. Um, and I I I think again, win or lose, you know, I certainly want to win and represent Shawnee District and the county and and do some good work, some modest work. Um, I just really want people to vote. Uh, voting's important. Uh, every year it's important to make the time to go vote. Um, So I think that's probably the last piece I'd like to leave.
Okay, I will say this, I was at the polling place yesterday, um, off of Sunnyside and We're in an off year, except for the fact that this is big for us. We're one of the two states that have the governor's race. And I've never seen it as packed. I mean, I I'm being serious and I we work every election. I've never seen people out there like they are right now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an invitation here, Patrick. Every Monday, we we do Mount Patriot meetings. And you are more than welcome to come out, talk to the Mountain Patriots, tell them exactly who you are. They're gonna want to meet you anyway. If you if you make it on the school board, they're gonna want to know Who is, who is representing? Because it's not just each district, okay? It's all of you. You guys as seven of you make that decision. It's not one. And that's what a lot of people think, same with the Board of Supervisors. Oh, I'm in the Shawnee District, or I'm in Red Bull, or I'm in Opeckin, or I'm in Back Creek. Well, don't you realize that you gotta get the majority of those guys on what's going? So you gotta know who's who. So you are more than welcome to come out, meet with the Mountain Patriots. Everybody else has. Okay, everybody's nice. I'm gonna tell you that now. We have a good time and uh, you're more than welcome to come out anytime. So Charlie, any, anything last, Charlie, that you you wanna, you wanna hit on real quick?
Well, good. Thank you very much, Patrick. I appreciate your your willingness, your honesty and your future service.
And I will say, as a ministry, uh, as Mount Patriots Educational Ministries, we try to give us the best content that we can. But we are a Christian ministry and I will say, we talked about this the other day, there's a lot of things that are happening in the world. If you're willing, if if you believe in your heart that Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior, and you can give your heart to and your in your soul to Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior. Repent, guys. This is, this is the time, you know, ask, ask and he shall receive. So he is there for you at all times. And we always Close our Mountain Patriot Educational Ministries with our Mountain Patriot prayers. So I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie Uh, to to do our Mountain Patriot prayer for us today, Charlie, please.
Thank you, Dana. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful world and this country that you have given us. And the patriots who are willing to care for it. Thank you for inspiring our founders to create this beautiful republic. Please help us to keep it, to keep it as the aspiring place to live. Please give us the wisdom to do the right things, the common sense to judge wisely, The energy to never give up. And your unending grace in which we take comfort. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Folks, it has been great. Charlie, always a pleasure you and I doing this. Patrick, we really appreciate you taking the time today. And as we always say, because we have a couple of books, The Thinking Prepper and the Bible, this one is in the book.
Amen.
Amen. Have a blessed day, guys. Talk to you in a bit.